I pray. This evening, I have a good thing to say. We thank you even at faith. They asked you to give us this knowledge. To continue to make progress. As we go all these things. Give us the knowledge to make the best. We pray that you. Bless the community. Pray for us. Ask you to give. They know how to keep it. Want to thank you so much. Our everything. Thank you. Thank you. In Jesus name. Next we will have the room call. Alderman Rubin eyes.
Here.
Alderman Shannon Wadzy. Alderman. Alderman.
Here.
Alderman.
Here.
Alderman.
Here.
Uh, please let me talk. Makes is the. Through the minutes of the previous. I believe we have three of them.
I didn't see anything. Um, I make a motion to accept. Are we gonna do each one of them? Vote on each one of them or?
You got a problem.
I, I, I mean, I didn't see anything wrong with any three of them. But.
We'll just call it. And we'll uh.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the minutes from September fourteenth. Uh, was a regular session.
Motion has been made. I have a second.
Second Alderman Middleton.
Motion has been made and second. Rubin eyes.
Hi.
Shannon Wadzy. Shannon Wadzy. Deborah Milton. And Reller.
Hi.
Motion. I have two. I mean, the fellow has. Probably.
Charles, is it just me? Um, he's cutting out. I can't hear half of what he's saying.
I can.
Everybody else okay?
Yeah, just when he bends his head down some.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's better.
Okay, we have two more minutes.
I make a motion that we get uh, accept the special session dated September the eighteenth. Also, the special session. Eighteen twenty-four.
Seconded.
Motion has been made. All in favor. Alderman Shannon Wadzy. Alderman Deborah Milton.
Hi.
Alderman Cindy Durham. Alderman Shannon Wadzy. The motion is. So motions. Is uh. Is the recommendation. Elections. Engaged in. Community.
Hey, Charles, can you hold on real quick? There's Alderman Rubin. Dan, uh, somebody's telling me that they want to get in the meeting. Can you let them in? Dan.
Maybe.
She was already in. She's been readmitted.
Okay, I'll, I'll let them know. Okay, sorry, Charles.
It's okay. Okay, uh, then we have. Come in the members here. Lee Lawman and uh. I see. So you wanna come in. Selection.
I'll jump in. I'll jump in here first. Uh. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's a pleasure to come before y'all. Uh, this evening. We met with the. We're getting a lot of feedback here.
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to have. Mutants. But we're not supposed to do that. I guess when we talk. If everybody can mute whenever you're on, please unmute. I think that'll clear things up quite a bit. Um. The, the committee met a few weeks ago and we interviewed three potential candidates. Uh, VGA out of Midland, SK Architecture out of Lovett and uh. MWM Architecture. Can everybody still hear me? Shake your heads. Alright, good. Alright, so we met with the three architecture firms and we went through a interview process. All three firms did a wonderful job. Thank you all for being on this, on this, uh, in this meeting tonight. And it was a great pleasure meeting y'all. Uh, we're very impressed with everybody uh, that attended. Um, the, the decision was very, very tight. Um, all three firms have benefits that they could bring to the city. Um, in our decision-making process, the overall main factor that set apart the firms was that of the USDA process and that experience. With that, our uh, main recommendation is VGA at this time. And uh. Following them would be SK Architecture. And then MWM behind them. Uh, VGA showed the most USDA experience. We believe that they would be able to handle the process the best uh, out of all the candidates. That is, that's what our recommendation is. Uh, I'll let the other committee members add in if they have anything to add to that.
Evening, everybody. Um, just to echo what Justin said, that's, that's correct. The uh, with VGA, their experience. And that was one of the main qualifications as well. Was to uh, to have that experience. So that was one thing that did set them apart and like I said, just to echo Justin, but they, they did come in first and uh, that is our recommendation.
Uh, this is Alderman Rubin. Um. I guess bring up the date on this committee. What is this committee for?
Mayor Evans, do you want to answer that? Or would you like for one of us to try to answer that?
Rubin, this is the new zoning board.
We've also been the grant committee. We've been reviewing uh. All the SOQs that have been submitted for the uh, one for this grant. And uh. The Main Street Rehabilitation Grant and others that have been coming through. And that is the primary purpose of this, of this committee. The Planning and Zoning Committee is, as of right now, it makes up the same members. But that has been the focus of this committee is the Grant Committee. That is our primary objective.
Mayor Evans, you'll want to unmute. There should be a. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me now, Ruben?
Yeah, I'm having bad internet here in my work, so I'm sorry. I didn't get, I got half of what he said, so. Uh, but you're gonna have to work with this, so, but I, I now I know where we're at on it now, so.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions?
The BGA, where are they out of? I missed that. I'm sorry.
Midland. Midland.
Okay, thank you.
And if. Any more questions? Well, I, I appreciate it with you guys. Really, it was a good experience. It was a. Very educated. The learning process. Uh, that's the next we move on. Next on the agenda is uh, Mr. Dinner will address the country. His investment in.
Um, good evening, counselor. Uh, if everybody can hear me okay, uh, Mayor Evans. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so I just wanted to appreciate the opportunity to take a chance to uh, address all of you. My name is Gareth Dunham. Um, I have just purchased the Simpsonian and the Main Street Pizza next to it. And uh, it's my intent to help revitalize Main Street and help uh, Sea Graves by uh, bringing the hotel back up, uh, have it open as a regular hotel. And uh, make significant investment in making sure that um, it's a a viable property here. It's been one of the most valuable properties in Sea Graves in terms of being able to bring other people to town, uh, tourists, tax revenue, to be honest. And uh, I'm looking forward to bringing it uh. Uh, as a, as a good business and have it open here. I want to first thank everyone that's welcomed me to the town. Um, I am not a stranger to this area. I've worked for Birdsong Peanuts for the last four years. Um, like people say, I've just come, come out of nowhere, but I've been in the neighborhood uh, for the last four years. Uh, mostly up in Brownfield and down in Seminole. Um, and uh, I just, I want to thank everyone that's really helping, Mayor Evans and Secretary Griff and uh, Councilwoman Sellers particularly. There's um, the plans that I wanted to let everybody know was um, the pizza place, uh, Main Street Pizza did close uh, briefly as there was a change of ownership. Uh, we've painted the front. We're having new windows put in. And uh, the place refurbished and we should be open shortly. And we expect to be open for extended hours. Um, and perhaps even delivery shortly in the future. In the next uh, couple of weeks, uh, the hotel, which we are rebranding back to its original name, nineteen seventeen name of the Hotel Texan. Uh, will be open twenty-four hours a day as a regular hotel. Uh, people can make online reservations from anywhere in the world. They'll be able to pull up and um, stay and uh. Our plans for the future include having the restaurant open sometime in twenty twenty-one. And refurbishing the back as possible. Um, there's a great uh, lawn area back there. We'd like to uh, refurbish as a uh. Kind of a, kind of a place for guests to relax, uh, also as a possible wedding venue. All kinds of things that would help bring people into town um, from the, from Brownfield, from Seminole and from farther beyond. Main reason I wanted to do, to talk to everyone was uh, to answer any questions anybody has. I know it's a small town. Um, people hear things. I've, I've heard, uh, I was closing the peanut shop, uh, the pizza shop and turning it into a sandwich shop. I've heard I was closing the hotel and turning it into a car wash. Um, they're not true. Uh, it's gonna be a hotel and it's gonna be a pizza shop. So, um, if anyone has any questions, um, I'd be happy to uh, to, to address them. But mainly, I just wanted to tell them when I'm here, um, I'm bringing substantial investment. I've already put uh, quite a substantial bit of my own funds into Main Street here. Uh, I'm prepared to do more and tend to do more. And um, I'm looking forward to working everyone in the city and uh, in the community. So if anyone had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if they don't, then I just want to thank you again for letting me uh. Take a moment here of your time and appreciate, anyone wants to come by uh, next couple of weeks, stop by the hotel anytime. And uh, you'll find me and we will be uh. November third, we should, we'll be open and uh, have a uh. I'll be watching the election along every area else, so that'll be, invite anybody to come by anytime and happy to talk to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate them buying the property and hopefully it'll be a big success for you.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm looking forward to it being open. Um, I'll, I'll give the brief, the brief thing. I came to town looking to stay in the hotel and was disappointed I couldn't. I had to stay in Denver City. And um, it's just such a beautiful property and historic landmark that um, I, I felt it deserved to be open. And um, as it happened, I had the means to do it and um, I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you very much.
This is Alderman Rubin. Um, I'll have to get with you. I'm part of the uh, Chamber of Commerce, so we would like to get involved with you and see what we can do to make a cutting ribbon and all that stuff. So you'll be seeing me sometime this week in the afternoon to see what we can schedule up for that.
That'll be great. Absolutely love to do that and uh, look and look forward to it.
I appreciate it. Welcome to Sea Graves.
Thank you.
This is Alderman Durham, um, Sydney, as it shows up there. And I just want to tell you congratulations and the best of luck. It's an old, old facility and, and we've enjoyed it being refurbished, so uh, hopefully it'll be a success for you as well.
I expect it will be. I expect it to be a success for me and a success for the, for the town. I'm, I'm looking forward to uh. You know, the, the people coming down Main Street and seeing cars parked in there, you know. Maybe one day we're gonna have parking problems on Main Street that the city council has to address. So, um, you know, that, that would not be a bad thing. So. Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is a presentation by Alderman Sellers regarding the City Hall in Knott City.
Um, hello, everybody. Um, I'm gonna try in a minute to share doing the share screen thing so y'all can see some pictures. This won't take but just a minute. This was just an idea that I came across. And I did, to all you, the department, all the department heads and all council members and the mayor. I emailed these pictures to you also, uh, just a few minutes ago. So, um, if you don't get to see them here, you can see them in your emails. Um, I was passing through Knott City, Texas a few months back and just out of the corner of my eye caught a glimpse of of their City Hall and realized instantly, you can tell by the structure, that it was, they had converted their abandoned Dairy Queen into the City Hall. They had, um, you know, completely, of course, completely remodeled that. But you know, the nice thing about that was it had plenty of existing parking space, covered parking at that. Um, they utilized their drive-through to accept payments, um, and that sort of thing, which is pretty neat. Um. She did tell, I talked to the city secretary there and she's the one that sent me the pictures of the inside of the building. And um, she did say that they, I believe they put in a false roof and, and built a new roof on top so that there's a second level of uh, that's, you know, locked, just nothing but storage. Um, but it's a pretty neat looking facility and we just happen to have that type of a building, you know, hanging out in our city that is not being used. Again, you know, we've just talked about you know, building a city hall or renovating our existing city hall. We've tossed, uh, you know, ideas around. This is just another idea that I, I came across. Um, let me see if I can share this right quick. I don't, I, I, I did it. That doesn't mean I know.
Anna and Mike and Farmer said, say hello.
In a meeting.
Uh, it says that the host has disabled screen sharing, so I guess I can't do that.
Oh, let me see if I can fix that for you.
Okay.
How's that?
That's it. Can y'all see these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So this is walking in the front door. Uh, she didn't give me much description of this. Um, she did give me, you know, just, you'll see it in a minute, handwritten. Uh, very um, archaic just uh, plans that they drew out, but this is as you walk in the, in, in the front door. This is a video. I'll just play the video. This is, this is their chamber area here. Those are the only videos, I mean photos she sent me. And then these drawings, I, I can pause that. I mean, you don't want to see those drawings right now, but um, you know, I can pause this movie and but you get the idea. Again, uh, this is just something to toss around. You get the idea though that we have an existing building like this and oh, there was one other picture of the outside. I'm not sure where it's at. It must not be included in this video. Let me see if I can get that one other picture of the. And can y'all see that?
Yes.
Yeah, that just shows you, you know, the outside. You can tell it was a Dairy Queen and. Anyway, that's it. That's all I have. I um, I did send, like I say, I sent all this to you and an email, everybody in an email, so. You can look at it at your leisure. Thank you.
Alright, alright, thanks. Thanks Kendra. Any comments? Next we will uh. Item nine is pass resolution twenty-ten thirteen A, accept tax roll revised figures. If I can find an attachment. What do we need, Dan? Just a motion?
Yes, uh, this is a resolution that you passed, I believe, uh. On the twenty-fourth. Uh, the figures that we used to pass this resolution at the time were slightly amended once Gala got uh, her final uh, readings in from the appraisers. Anyway, because they are slightly different figures, we need to pass the resolution again for her records. This is something that's done every year.
Alderman Middleton, I make a motion that we uh, pass the resolution number twenty dash ten dash thirteen A.
Motion. Do I hear?
I, I second it. Cindy Durham.
All in favor? I guess everybody's muted. Alderman Shannon Wadzy.
Hi.
Alderman Deborah Milton.
Hi.
Alderman Kendra Sellers.
Hi.
Alderman Senator. Motion is passed. Next on the agenda is item ten, pass resolution twenty-nine ten at thirty. Hire a gone counsel for the freshwater improvement combination grant bond. Then why don't you give a little insight of it?
Uh, once again, this resolution is to appoint uh. David Mendez is our bond counsel. We have previously done this, but for uh, the USDA wastewater project, Mr. Mendez and his firm are bond counsel on that. Uh, each time that we appoint a bond counsel, because he's a lawyer, because it's a legal document, we have to have a resolution to that effect. So, that's what we're doing is uh, firing uh. The Mend, Mendez and his firm as our bond counsel for the combination grant and bond for the freshwater improvements through Texas Water Development Board.
And refresh my memory, is this for the the water tower and?
Yes, ma'am. It is. It's for the water tower. This is, this is for the uh, three point three million dollar grant portion from the EPA. And Mr. Mendez will be working on two point seven million dollar bond portion from Texas Water Development.
So I guess we need. Pass the resolution.
I, I was just looking here. I didn't see the name Mendez on here. It says Bigger Stuff.
That is, yeah, that is the firm.
Okay, okay. Alright.
And his, his name is on the very last page, David Mendez.
Okay.
So I need a.
I make a motion that we pass resolution twenty dash ten dash thirteen dash B. Resolution authorizing hiring of bound bond can counsel on a contingency fee basis.
Motion has been made.
Alderman Middleton, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Alderman Shannon Wadzy.
Hi.
Alderman Deborah Milton.
Hi.
Alderman Kendra.
Hi.
Alderman Senator.
Hi.
Motion pass. Okay, item number eleven. I guess it's pretty much the same thing. It's take action to hire, financial advisor for the TWDB freshwater improvement combination grant bond. I guess that's the same thing, but just the financial advisor.
It does not actually call for a resolution. It will take a motion, uh, to engage, as a financial advisor. Uh, that is, uh, Mr. Eric Mahah of Hilltop Securities. His advisory agreement was included in your packet. Uh, we did not need a financial advisor for the USDA. They don't require a financial advisor. However, Texas Water Development Board does require that we have an expert in investments who's going to take a look at all of our finances and make sure that we're not biting off more than we can chew, is going to advise us on how much we can, we can actually handle and has been doing that for us so far. Mr. Mahah, along with Mr. Mendez and Mr. Tompkins, are the team that has developed the application so far to the Texas Water Development Board. Texas Water Development is reaching out just this afternoon. Uh, they're going to have a board meeting. Uh, I believe it's December the third, but before the end of this month, they want to have all of these things in place so that their team can write up the proposal for the board. And, uh, we did have a financial advisor when we, uh, put together the last bond, the bond that we're working on now for the, uh, water improvements project of twenty fifteen. Uh, Mr. Mahah's firm is, uh, as I say, they've been involved with this right since the beginning of this Texas Water Development project. So, uh, what, what we would like to have happen is someone make a motion to engage Hilltop Securities and Eric Mahah as financial advisors on this project.
Can I get a motion? Financial advisor.
Uh, Kendra Sellers, Alderman Sellers, I make a motion for the financial advisor.
Alderman Kendra.
Alderman Middleton, second.
Alderman.
Hi.
Alderman Shannon Wesley.
Hi.
Alderman Deborah.
Hi.
Alderman Kendra Sellers.
Hi.
Alderman.
Ah.
Motion pass to. Next on the agenda is to hire. For the. So I guess.
I can't hear you, Charles, and there's somebody that's got some feedback.
Okay. Can you hear me that, Deborah? Hello?
Yes, you, as long as you keep your head up, then we can hear you better.
Okay, I'm sorry for reading off of it. Alright, thank you. Okay, I do need a motion and a second. To hire a project engineer.
Alderman Sellers, I make a motion to, uh, hire the project engineer.
Alderman Sally, I'll make a motion to hire a project engineer.
Alderman, Alderman Durham, second.
Alderman, yeah. All in favor, Alderman Ruben Vice.
Hi.
Alderman Shannon Wesley.
Hi.
Alderman Shannon. Deborah Milton.
Hi.
Alderman Kendra.
Hi.
Alderman Senator.
Ah.
Uh, motion pass. Uh, next is the discussion of the tax government code. I have to find which one of that, first one. Government Code A, ANN five five one dash one forty-four. Dan, have you got yours pulled up? I don't.
Yeah, I've got it here.
I, I get those numbers. Which one is that talking about the, uh, I mean, the, uh.
Yeah, subsection five fifty-one point one forty-four of the Texas Government Code. And it's excerpts from that, that I had sent to everyone once. Uh, I'm sure you all had a chance to read it, but the mayor asked me to include it again tonight. And, uh, it's, uh, going over the criminal penalties for, uh, violating the Open Meetings Act knowingly. Unauthorized closed meeting. If a member of a government body commits a crime, if he or she calls or aids in calling an unauthorized closed meeting, uh, closes or, uh, aids in such a meeting or participates in an unauthorized closed meeting. This violation is a misdemeanor punishable by a fine between one hundred and five hundred dollars and one to six months in jail or both. It does say, however, if the member of a governing body relied on official written advice from a court, the attorney general or the governing body's attorney regarding the legality of that closed meeting, the mayor, uh, the member will have an affirmative defense to prosecution under this section of the act. Uh, another one is meeting in numbers less than a quorum with the intent to circumvent the act. This is the walking quorum thing. And if a member of a governing body commits a crime, if that member intentionally or knowingly conspires to circumvent the act by meeting in numbers of less than a quorum for the purpose of secret deliberations, this is a misdemeanor published punishable by a fine of one hundred to five hundred and one to six months in jail or both. Another one is a failure to keep a certified agenda or a recording of such a meeting. That, uh, brings pretty much the same, uh, class C misdemeanor, uh, fines. And, uh, finally, the disclosure of a copy of a certified agenda or a recording. A certified agenda or recording of a lawfully closed meeting, the violation of that, this, this is if you're having like an executive session, you discuss something and then somebody releases that information without a court order. This is a class B misdemeanor with a fine of, uh, two thousand dollars and a term of up to one hundred eighty days in jail. So that, that was just some information that I came across and wanted to share with you. Now, the one following that, uh, item number fourteen has more to do with the way that, and this is all new to everybody, and this is why I looked it up, how we're supposed to conduct ourselves when we do have these Zoom meetings. And there's a couple of things that, uh, do stick out. One is that in these type of meetings, anyone who is speaking and especially anyone who is on the, uh, on the board or is an alderman, the law requires that your face be shown. The thing is that the intent is that anyone watching the meeting has to be able to observe your facial expressions, get the intent of what you're saying and be able to see your face. So when you are attending one of these meetings, you must turn your camera on and be recorded, especially when you're speaking. Other than that, it's, uh, pretty much the kind of stuff that we have to have a decent connection. We have to make these meetings available to anyone that wants to see them. We've been in compliance with that. We have to make recordings of these meetings and post them immediately after the meeting is over for anybody to watch. The only thing that I've seen that we've had some difficulty with, and I do realize that we've had, uh, you know, problems with, uh, technical issues and they make allowances for that. But if we're just not showing ourself, that's the thing that I've been seeing the most of. So please, going forward, always turn your camera on, especially if you're speaking.
Then you said something about recording, was that, what about an in-person meeting? Does that have to be recorded then?
Yes, if it's an in-person meeting and you're not able to let, uh, if, if circumstances because of the pandemic will have you having an in-person meeting, you have to broadcast that meeting so that anyone who would wish to see it, even though they couldn't physically be in that room for whatever reason, would be able to see it. And the law, when the governor, uh, when the governor made the exceptions to certain open meetings laws at the beginning of this, it was with the stipulation that any municipality who had, as of January the first, twenty twenty, a website was required to do all these things. We did have a, a website, even though it wasn't functioning very well, but as soon as we began, we got into this problem, uh, we did make the effort to get, uh, functioning and we have a very good one now. And we're able to offer a direct link. Uh, any of you that have visited the City of Seagrave's website anytime lately, will find that there is a countdown clock on the main page of that that says how many days, hours and minutes it is to the next meeting. Here's a copy of the agenda and you can join that meeting. That goes up the same time that I post the agenda, that goes on to the website. So we're in full compliance with all those requirements. The only thing that we've been, that we could have gotten in trouble on is that business about the not, not showing your face when you speak, but I just wanted to inform everybody because, uh, you may not have realized that, but, uh, it is something that needed our attention. So I thank you for your attention to this this evening.
Mayor Evans?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question on that. Who put that, who put this on the agenda? Is there a problem besides, uh, visual?
I did. I had.
Okay. I can't be on vis- um, I'm visioned today because I'm at work and I don't think the company allowed me to be on, uh, showing what, where I'm at. Uh, so, um, if that's gonna be a problem, then I need to figure out something else. But I was just curious on how, then we talked about this a while back on this and what compliance we're all in this.
I'm sure we could work through that. I mean, you got a perfect reason. I mean, okay, I don't see a problem myself. I mean, that's your job. I mean, you can't. I mean, that's, you, you can do, do the best you can. I like to say about that.
Okay.
It does, Alderman Vias, it, it speaks about that sort of situation also that, uh, perhaps you're not able to, uh, be a part of the meeting on Zoom, but you can make a telephone call and we can record your voice. So, so it's not as strict as all that. It's just that we all want to make every effort that we can to be in compliance as much as we can and to give benefit of these meetings as much of our consideration as we can and make them available for everybody to be able to look at.
Okay.
Any more questions? Item thirteen or fourteen, item thirteen and fourteen. If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Before we begin that, I did get the police report. It's generally just his racial profiling. I was given that in time, but I did neglect to scan and get that to you. All my apologies for that, but the chief did submit that report.
Renee, I, I received an email from you this afternoon. What was that about? That she was, the email that you sent this afternoon late. What was that for? You're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Uh, I believe it was over the main lift station issue that we're having.
Oh, okay. It sounded like something you was gonna have to rent.
Oh, no, that is, uh, for the vac truck. Is it, I think I included that. I had talked to you guys, uh, last, I'd sent you the letter for my report and, uh, the highway department has asked me to go and spot all of our water and sewer lines on three eighty-five and eighty-three where they plan on building the culverts. And, um, there's going to be numerous places to spot and we don't know what all is in there. So I want to rent a vacuum trailer to go out there and what they call pothole each and every one of those water lines. It would be much safer and much faster for us to do this. It was, you know, we won't be likely to break any lines and cause any problems. And I sent you an estimate, uh, from the company that I would like to rent it from. And that's what that was about.
I mean, I mean, you don't have any other choice. You're gonna have to rent it from someone, aren't you?
Yes, sir. But I, I kinda went with these guys. They're real tentative. They, they're attentive. They come to the shop, uh, you know, pretty often, you know, to see me and, and, you know, off, tell me everything they offer. Um, and they're in Lubbock and they won't charge me a pickup or a delivery fee if, you know, we go pick it up and we, we have the resources to do that.
I feel like this is very viable because we do want them to re- to replace those gutters and everything or to get it where it will drain better.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I see personally, I'm definitely, we're spending this money to get that stuff taken care of.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Rick, you have anything? Can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Send it. He's not muted. Uh, I, I have a question, Renee, uh, and maybe he can get his speaker going. Uh, you also sent us a, with, you sent us a paper with two different, uh, you called it just for information and, uh, one of them was some, some property development stuff. And there was a, a little map with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, can you, I mean, is now the time, Charles, to talk about this?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Um, I had a, um, lady and I did not get her name. She did not tell me her name. Um, approached me a couple of days ago about wanting to get, uh, water and sewer tap done. And this is in the area between Seventh Street and Fifth Street. Uh, there's no Sixth Street platted. Only the alley that we have, you know, put through there. The county went and graded it out for us. We have no utilities there. There is no water and there is no sewer. And I had to tell her that I, I couldn't help her. And, um, um, from what I understand, the property belongs to Juan Perez and, um, And I can't find, I didn't look that hard, but I looked on Gaines County appraisal and the property, as far as I can tell, is still in Joanna Aranda's name. All the property there is in Joanna Aranda's name, except for a few lots. And I cannot find where any of it has been platted. None of it has been developed ever. So I, at this point, I, I called our city attorney and talked to him about it. And he said that the city was not responsible or required to make any kind of improvements without the property being platted, without it being developed by a developer, and the city did not have to finance it. So I just wanted to let y'all know kind of where we were at there so that y'all could decide what y'all wanted to do. Normally, property like that are developed by architects and they're presented to the council. They're, they're checked out to see if they are developable. And then they're presented to the city's council and the city makes a decision whether they want to get it developed or not. This is a flood zone. And 2015, when it flooded, every bit of that property was underwater all the way up to Mr. Windsor's house. And I, the last young lady that got a mobile home put there, I put on her permit and had her sign it, making her aware and her admitting that she was aware that it was a flood zone so that the city would not be liable for any damages if we have a flood like that again.
Yeah.
And I was advised to do this by the fire protection company that I deal with.
Renee, yeah.
Charles, Charles, this is Alderman Rubin. Since Joanna's name was mentioned and she's on here, can she say something?
Yes, she can say something.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I think she's gone.
No, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. No, I just had just a comment about that, about those lots over there. I did sell all those lots and I did talk to every owner and they are gonna get it plotted. And about the, hopefully that there's no service out there. There's a lot of houses around there, so I'm pretty sure that, you know, some kind of sewer and water can be put out there. So I, I don't know what the problem is on that.
Joanne, I went out there with Juan last week and looked at where it was. He showed us the area where he had graded off what to put his trailer. Actually, it's higher than the previous one just put in there.
Okay.
Already been someone puts them in there running east and west. And his is back to the east up higher. And I told him that is the water line is back to the west. You know, he's from that point to his house to saying, I mean, the sewer. Water, I mean, the city wouldn't be out of anything. It was all gonna be on him and he, he was okay with that.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying. And about being a flood zone area, all the people know there that it's a flood zone, so they're the ones that are gonna be responsible if a flood does. I mean, it's their own property and it's their own, you know, the city won't do with that. So that's the only concern that I had if, you know, if they're willing to put something out there, they know it's a flood zone, you know, I'm pretty sure they can do that.
He, he wasn't gonna put any kind of, have a trailer. But he said he was gonna bring it all up and he would like to put some livestock out there.
It's been the city livid.
Yeah, I know.
He can't put livestock there.
I know.
There's a lot of livestock in Seagrave. Chicken, livestock, and there's a bunch of those here. Goats.
Only if you knew. Yeah. Anyway, where he was gonna put it. I already want trailer there is Roar where he gonna put his. He's gonna build it with a, with a, so. And he knows it's a flood zone, so he's, he's, you know, he'll have to pay for the expenses.
Yes, sir. Everyone, everyone is gonna have it plotted. I spoke with everyone and everybody is willing to have it plotted to get an actual address. That was my only question.
Well, can I say something?
Sure.
My, my question is, who's gonna pay for all the, the surveys and for the engineers to plot out the utilities? Because normally it's a developer's responsibility. And there is no street. There is no access to those properties. There's never been a street platted there. And there's no room for a street there. The properties butt up to each other. How do they gain access? Because they're not supposed to drive through alleys. And if there is sewer able to go there, what about during the flood zone? Are we gonna sewer, flood our sewer system through manholes? We did once before. And there will be more manholes in lower areas. I mean, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered here before before y'all decide what y'all are gonna do with this.
Alder, Mayor Evans, this is Alderman Middleton. I guess, I, I guess my question is, several years ago, the mayor was going to develop some property going out towards the cemetery. You know, we don't have water sewer out going that direction. But, you know, that couldn't be done then either because you have to have a, you know, a, someone that's gonna come in and buy that subdivision and have it developed. And that's what, I guess my question is, you know, or I, I don't see how it can be developed. Has it even been surveyed and do they know where their property starts and begins?
I don't, I don't know. Two trailer house right in that same area right there. But it's, but it's, I guess that's Seventh Street. Though you, you can access those trailer houses from Seventh Street. But where Juan gonna put his, it's that little alley. It's what he has to go down to get to his. There's those, the Sixth Street ends right there on Avenue K. So, I mean, I mean, he may be already in place by the time we get our zoning board up and running. So that'd be a big job for them. So I don't, I mean, that's gonna be pretty soon, so. That's, that's something we're gonna really have to let those guys make those decisions of what they recommend. The red man, I don't know.
Renee, I have a question on that then.
Yes, ma'am.
If you're saying that it has to be surveyed and platted and it's each person that has bought those lots from Mrs. Aranda, then her name is out of it, right? She doesn't own it any longer?
Well,
if the Gaines County appraisal district still shows everything in her name?
Yes, ma'am. I, I, from what I understand, the, the folks haven't finished paying for it and until they finish paying for it, it, it will stay in Mrs. Aranda's name. The way that it was explained to me and what I've seen in the past, if you have property like that, big chunks of property, blocks of property, then, and if you're going to develop it, normally you're the developer and you hire a company to come in and survey all the properties and determine whether or not there can be utilities put in and they plaid out all the utilities and they present that all to the city. And, you know, they tell the city, we want to develop this and the city, you know, makes a vote on that. And then the developers, they pay for all of that. They pay for the utilities. They pay for all the surveys. They pay for the engineering. And I know this is not a big city, but I, I just feel like that there needs to be something done before, you know, y'all tell me to go out there and lay water and sewer lines and I can't even survey the topical area. It's not my expertise. I don't know how to do that. I will have to have an engineer come out there and state i- if there is, if it is able to have a sewer line. It, it's, it's kind of complicated.
Yeah.
And right now, there's nothing been surveyed, other than just the plots, the blocks that she, that she purchased at, at the, at the sheriff's sale at the courthouse in Seminole.
Yes, Juan, he's already bought it. The thing is that we put in the warranty deed after the appraisal. They have a certain time where they can change it to my name because I called them. So right now they just have it on hold because he did pay me cash and it's already his property. So I called appraisal district and they said they just have it on hold until this next year that they're gonna take it out. But pretty much all that backlog are already sold then after someone else's name.
Joanna, can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Have had it surveyed and you, they know the size of each lot that they purchased? And you know how many there?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We bought the, the property there at the sheriff's sale. We had it surveyed right away. So all the four corners are surveyed and there's fourteen lots in total there. And so like I said, there, there's seven through twelve, like in the front side, I guess, on Seventh Street. And then there's sixteen through twenty-four on the backside of that. So the sixteen through twenty-four, all of those are sold completely like cash. And the front ones that already have the address, which on trailer that's there already has an address there, but she's still paying me in payment.
Okay.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
You said, Joanna, that all of the corners had been surveyed, but did the surveyor survey out each individual lot?
No, no, not each individual lot. That's why, that's why, that's why, I mean, you're saying that they have to plot it out and they are already aware, aware that they have to do that. So that they're gonna do each individual, like say one person bought two lots, they're gonna go plot those two lots. Each person is gonna plot their lots that they bought.
And then just one more thing. Each one of those blocks are both, are both the blocks, all the lots are right at this moment named eleven on eleven Seventh Street. And this last lady's, the, the one we just made taps for, she may be the last one we make taps for. We had to do it twice to be able to get it low enough for her to connect on. The sewer line in Seventh Street is just not deep enough and we may, we may not be able to accommodate any more mobile homes on Seventh Street. And that, that's all, that's all I gotta say.
Is Justin Cantwell, is he still part of our meeting? Is Justin?
Yeah, I'm here.
Justin, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am. Feel free.
On these lots, if they haven't been surveyed and you're selling them, if someone pays cash for it, could they say I bought the whole thing?
It depends on what your deed calls for. And I just happen to be looking at some of the deeds that she's granted out right now that I pulled up. And for example, part of it is lot nine and ten of block F1 of original town of Seagrave. I'm not real sure where that description come from because there's not a block F1 of the original town of Seagrave. From what I can see.
I guess that's, Joanna, I guess that's where I have a problem is I just wanna make that you've purchased the property and that you are selling the lots that have been surveyed and platted so that the person from you knows what they have. If you haven't plotted lots out and had them marked off, I mean, I don't see how they know what they're purchasing.
What, the way I do, I take it out of my, the deed, the actual deed that I have, like the sheriff's deed gave me, of course, the, the block and the lots. So what I do when I sell property separate, I just go by what they told me. I created the lots, like say, like he said, it says block whatever, block F1 from lots eleven through twelve or whatever. And that's how I sell them their property. The warranty, I just get it off of my, my actual deed that I have.
So on your deed, it shows that you have fifteen lots on that block?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wanting to understand because, you know, I've, I, I just remember we tried to develop or we were, the city was thinking, developing land as you're going out towards the cemetery on the north side. And you had to have a developer come in, build the roads, build the, the curbs. It had to be, lots had to be surveyed and platted and, and designed how the water was gonna, the city was going to have water to that property and where the sewer was gonna be ran and how they were gonna be ran. And so I guess that's why I was asking questions. I, I worry that we, you know, we haven't done something correctly. We're selling these lots and then, I, I mean, I, I guess I, I need to, we need to double check as a council. We need to see how, we need to be handling this. And is, and is it even our problem? I mean, I, you know, when someone's selling a piece of land, is it our responsibility to go out there and make sure that it has, you know, sewer and water? I mean, I, that's what, I guess that's my concern right now. Yes, we want to develop the land or we want people to move in and we want, you know, want it to be a taxable entity or, you know, each lot, people paying taxes on it, but we need to make sure as a city that we're, that it's being done correct.
I have a question. This is Alderman Rubin. And what Deborah was saying about, you know, having all this, do we have anything on file in this part of the city that says if somebody wants to come in and develop here in Seagrave? Is there, here's, here's what, here's the package. This is what we're looking for. This is what require for the city. Do we have anything like that? If, if we did, this is something we can give Joanna here. This is the checklist. This is what we need. This is what the city require. Do we have this info to give her to go buy?
You know, the, the problem I'm having is somebody owned all of that stuff. So how did they initially buy it? I own it. I mean, all of that, where those old cars are, that belongs to somebody. How did they own it at the beginning with? I mean, when we stopped this street, Sixth Street, all of that property back there, I remember years ago before, not off in that area, but there was, there was little old houses right there.
Yes, sir. I was told there was something there years ago. And so that's why, I mean, I didn't think it was a problem because there's a property around there. And so, I mean, that's why I really didn't think it was a problem. And because there, there's already a couple of traders there. And one of them, one of the traders that are there is not mine, but it was not my property. It was someone else's property, but they were able to put their service out there. So that's what I'm saying. I don't know how it's a problem if there has been, you know, So that's what I'm saying. I don't know how it's a problem if there has been, you know, um, property out there and there's, you know, property all around there.
Charles, did you hear me a while ago about paperwork and stuff like that?
About what? Yes, yes, I heard you.
Yeah. Is there something in the city has in file or something that, that we can look into or what? I mean, do we have anything?
No.
Or we're just deciding on our own how to handle this?
No, I know we don't have anything like it. Normally, you know, a developer or something like.
We don't know what's right, we don't know what's wrong. I mean, we don't know what, what direction to go. I mean, how do we, how do we decide on this? Uh, what?
Well, I mean, I guess the first place you would start probably with the appraisal district. I mean, all that property right there, it belongs to somebody. And I don't know, I don't know who it all belongs to, but somebody owns it.
Yeah. And the, uh, for the other question that was earlier mentioned, how do I get the property? Uh, I have the Gaines County appraisal district, uh, tax statement here. And, uh, my property description, that's what it says, block F1, lot seven through twelve and sixteen through twenty-four, uh, OTC graves. So what I do is, and the appraisal districts never told me any different, cause I've sold properties before. And what I do is just get my description and, uh, make the warranty deed out of my description. But which, uh, where it says block F1 lot, say someone buys me seven and eight, I just put block seven and eight. So, um, there's, that's how I get my descriptions of, on the warranty deeds.
Mayor Evans, can I ask a question to Joanna?
Cheers.
Uh, Joanna, on your lots, um, I've looked at the original deed from nineteen seventy-three that the original owner before the sheriffs, um, have took it over and sold it to you.
Mm-hmm.
Do you, have you ever seen the lot layout of that block? Of how those lots are numbered in there? And if so, did you see it at the, filed in the courthouse? Or how did you come about with that? Or do you have anything that makes?
The way, the way we had it, cause, uh, like I said, we had it surveyed. So the survey guy is the one that told us how it was running, the lots, the way they were running. And they even told me the city had to put, uh, that alleyway that they put in, uh, not too long ago, that wasn't there. And the people at the survey company told me that, uh, the city had to make a alleyway through there, because there was an alley there several years ago. So, uh, the survey people are the ones that told me how the lots ran through there.
Did they give you a copy of that plat, of those lots?
Uh, I, I believe I have, when I have to look for it, but yes sir, uh, they always give you copies of, uh, the plot.
You have a copy of that, that is, that's a legal binding document? And it should have all the information for that block? If that is a developed block and it is already an established block, then that does not have to be platted.
Okay.
Plated document, that is a plated subdivision. It just has not been a developed subdivision.
Yes sir, yes sir.
It is the responsibility of the property owners to develop that subdivision.
Okay.
Cause it's already been, it's already been, the plating process has already been done. It's been done since at least nineteen seventy-three.
Mm-hmm.
Block has already been planted, if that is a legal bottom, uh, uh, legal document. Um, I can share my screen and show the original town of, of Seagraves and that block does not show up in the original town of Seagraves. But it could be an amendment somewhere.
Okay.
Once a, once it is platted and it is a recorded block and a recorded addition, and it has been annexed into the city, then that opens up a whole different can of worms. Because whenever it becomes annexed to the city, then technically it is the city's responsibility to provide services to that annexation. If it has already been a developed block. If they were, if that, if those lots were already developed when that thing was annexed, or even after it was annexed, that, those utilities are to be, are, are supposed, supposed to be provided by the city as a service to the citizens of the city.
Okay. Yes sir, thank you for that. I will.
That's the council's decision. I don't, that's just my professional opinion.
Thank you for that, Justin. It helps. Well, so I guess we still had a standstill right in there with, uh, with Juan, huh? He's just, you muted. You unmuted.
News get a copy of that survey to the city and have them look at it and make sure it is a it has been recorded at some point in time in the county. That is the, that's the first thing you have to do is make sure it is a filed plat, that that block has been filed at some point in time.
Okay, I will get that.
Thank you. Any more questions on the consent agenda?
Hey Charles, this is Alderman Rubin. Do you wanna talk about what I sent you over earlier today on that carport on eleven oh one Fifteenth Street?
Yeah, you can talk about it. If you, but you, you go, David, show them. Uh, yeah.
Okay, real quick, uh, I just got a, a phone call and I visit with these people and there's a carport and I sent to Mayor Evans and I think, uh, I think I sent it to one more person. I forgot. I think it was, uh, Shannon. Now I didn't have time to send it to the rest of the guys, uh, ladies, I'm sorry. Um, there's a carport on, uh, on eleven oh one Fifteenth Street. It's behind the house. And it's away from the alley and it's right on the edge of property line. And I guess Renee went up there and told them that they need to knock it down within ten days. Where they did not, uh, uh, give them any paperwork, any, any signs that she's from the city. And just verbally told them that they need to knock it down. Why are we still doing that, Renee?
You muted, yeah. I muted yourself, Renee.
There we go, I got it. Well, first of all, they come and asked me to look at a fence and it is not a carport. Um, they built a cover over, next to their house, um, on their property and they built it all the way to the neighbor's property line. In fact, used the fence post as part of the awning for that cover. It's not a carport. And, um, I told him that he had to move it three feet away from, uh, the property line. And, uh, they started telling me, well, what if we get the neighbor to sign a paper and all this stuff? And I told him that was not a good practice for the city. What if the guy moved and you didn't have an agreement anymore? Et cetera, et cetera. I told him just to move it three feet away from the property line. And I waited about a week before I went back and looked. And they still hadn't made any progress or tried or attempted to move it. And it's three poles. And, um, I told him that I would come back in ten days and look. And that was all that was said. It is not a carport.
Yeah, the neighbor said that it was okay for them to do that.
Well, we don't.
So, not a problem with it.
Well, it's not a good, it's not a good practice to have. It's not a good practice to have. It causes problems.
Renee, that was the fence on the west side, is that correct?
Uh, the fence on the west side, yes sir.
Well, it looks like it's the, it's a straight fence from the road all the way back to the alley.
Yes sir, it is.
So the whole fence has to be moved?
No sir, the fence is fine. The fence is on the property line. He just built a cover and awning and he built it to the property line, to the fence. He used part of the fence as part of the cover. And the ordinance says that you are three feet from your neighbor's property. You can't build anything up to the neighbor's property.
Did you provide them the ordinance? Did you show them the ordinance that the city of Seagrave has?
I did tell them the, I did quote them the ordinance, yes I did.
No, did you give them the paperwork? That's what I'm asking.
They didn't ask, they didn't ask for any paperwork. But when I go back in ten days, I certainly will.
That's not what I'm asking. The first time you go and you, you step on somebody's property, you give them who you, what, who you are and what you're there for.
When I went there, when I went there, it was to look at their fence. They, there wasn't anything said about the awning in the back. She called me and she come up to the shop and asked me to come and look to see if their fence was good. And I told her I certainly would. And I showed up and I looked at the fence and I saw that in, you know, where it was all the way to the property line. And I told her it was not legal, that it was against the ordinance. I explained the ordinance to her. And I went back in a week and, cause her dad wasn't home. And I went back in a week and asked her if she talked to her dad. And she said that, that he talked to the neighbor and the neighbor said it was okay. And I told him, well, this is what you have to do. I said, but it is not a standard practice and it is not recommended. Just move it three foot. And she said, okay. And I said, all right, I'll be back in about ten days. And it hasn't been ten days.
I guess I'm a little confused. I have to look at that again, cause it looks to me is the ordinance, so the ordinance is the problem. The fence is okay?
Yes sir, the fence is fine.
Any more questions for any of the, uh, for the consent agenda? If not, I guess I will entertain a motion at this time.
Alderman Sellers, and I make a motion that we, um, approve the consent agenda.
Alderman Durham, I second it.
A motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, Oliver Rubin bias?
Aye.
Alderman Sheldon.
Aye.
Oliver Derrick.
Aye.
Oliver Kendrick.
Aye.
And Alderman Senator.
Aye.
So there's no question. Uh, next one. Public comment. Green, Green Minister.
Joanna Aranda timed up for public comments this afternoon. I don't know if that has been satisfied or she still has something to add?
Uh, yes sir, it was something else.
All right.
Okay, uh, I was here with, uh, with the same, uh, calling about my water bills on, uh, three thirteen Appleton. Um, I, I, I did speak to mayor, uh, saying that, uh, nothing could be done on that, uh, trying to fix my water bill. But, uh, uh, I just, uh, haven't received any, uh, notice. Supposedly the lawyer, uh, was in contact and saying that it was illegal, what they were doing with the water. And, uh, I just haven't got anything in written notice saying that, uh, you know, if that's really illegal or not. So I'm just trying to get, you know, the point where, you know, am I supposed to be paying this much water for the property that's not being used for the apartments that? I just want some kind of, uh, you know, notice saying that, you know, I am paying the correct way or whatever.
So you, are you, you?
I'm sorry?
You just had one reason, right?
I'm sorry, you're breaking up and I can't hear you.
Say, well, I think that your water bill go up, changed the reasons, right?
Um, well, I guess they're not gonna go up until this month, aren't they, in October? Um, I haven't gotten the new one yet, but it's never changed. Um, like on that property, I have those six units and, um, like I said, over, uh, a year now, I mean, it's just one, one apartment that's being used and I'm getting charged for each one of them. So that's, um, what I'm trying to get at and see if, if there can be any adjustments on that. I mean, I don't mind paying when there's people, you know, in the apartment, but when there's not any there, it's just kind of hard to pay that much water when that's so much used.
I, I can take, uh, get the adjustment regular. And, uh, this time we did, I'll see how. Just to see if what we did was legal.
Mm-hmm.
That's asking my special favor. You can do that, but when you start doing that, it's up for everybody. That's what it does. So we, we, if we were allowed, uh, you know, special favor. If you do it, then you go up to play everybody's interest. So that's kind of, is that correct, Dana?
It's, so am I gonna get this in writing saying, you know, nothing can be done? You know, I just want something in writing saying, you know, um, that nothing's gonna be done. Cause I, I just get told that nothing can be done. But I mean, uh, I don't get anything in writing or anything that's saying why.
Dan, did you, uh?
I, I heard you. I will, uh, ask Mr. Akers to draft a, an opinion letter explaining the issues to Ms. Aranda and quoting the specific laws that are involved. And, uh, I'll get that available for you, sir, if you decide you wanna have it sent to her. I'll contact our legal counsel tomorrow for that.
Okay, you go ahead and do this. Look like it's, yeah. It's keep coming up. Do we?
Okay. Yeah, that was it. I, I mean, I just, like I said, I just get told that, you know, it's illegal and that there's nothing can be done, but I never get anything in writing and saying, you know, that actually, um, nothing can be done about this.
Okay. Okay, we'll take care of that. Any more comments? There's no more comments. There's one item on here that warrants a discussion. No extra one to be taken at this time.
Mayor Evans, uh, Alton Middleton, have we determined when Halloween and are we gonna allow it in town?
You know, we need to think about that. Uh, with this virus, I just gotta report, they both, or we got three, they have three more to say. So, let, let, let me do some thinking on that to our head. In, uh, in, uh, what he recommends, uh, feeling is on that, uh, I don't know if, I don't know if we can, that's my opinion. But I, I, let me, let me.
We always just set a date and so I knew it wasn't on the agenda. And we usually set a date of when we're gonna, you know, allow it. And so I hadn't heard anything. That's why I brought it up.
What did, what did the council think about it? You know, are we? I don't know if that's a good idea.
This is Alderman Bias. I'm, I'm for it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, this is Alderman Durham, I, I don't see a problem with it. But it might be nice if we had it like all in one area, like, you know, just kind of announce that it would all be done like, like they do the trunk or treat or something. Instead of going house to house.
Well, I have, let me do some checking, other people are doing. Got a cricket in it. Let me, let me do some checking with others, I'll see what they're doing. And see what is, what his comments are, uh, recommendations. Uh, let, let me do that and, uh, we can, uh, we can have a quick Zoom meeting if we decide to, if we will. I don't think we have to be voting on it, we can just set a date. And I can do that the next couple of days. She muted, Joanna.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I see, I, I saw your lips moving, I thought you were talking.
Oh, no, no.
No one have anything else? Next, I guess we'll set the date and time of the next meeting.
The November the ninth.
Is the six thirty is okay with everybody?
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, now I need a motion to adjourn.
This is Alderman Sellers, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Alderman Bias, I second it.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn, meeting adjourned. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.